Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission Meeting of February 3, 2014. My name is Ted Tucker. I'm president of the Planning Commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Cronzer, Brown, Bender, Lipke-Pier, Slack, Forney, and Cohen. At this time, please make sure all your electronic devices are placed on silent. Our first order of business is to approve the actions from the meeting of January 13, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those? Second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are approved. The next item is to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. To sort the agenda items printed on the green sheets that I hope you have or picked up outside. We'll go through them one by one and decide what should be discussed, what will be put on the consent agenda, what will be continued, and what would be withdrawn. So, item number one is downtown east. There's five blocks between Third and Fifth Streets and Chicago and Fifth Avenues for a, what are we doing there, registered land survey. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff report on that? If not, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Item number two, CPM Residential Development at 1218 through 22 Como Avenue Southeast. Is anyone here to speak about that? Okay, we will put that on discussion. Item number three, Commercial Addition at 2500 University Avenue Northeast. Commissioner Cronzer wants to add or suggest a condition for one of those applications, so we'll have a brief presentation and discussion about that. Item number four is the Sarasota Building Residential Development at 155 Fifth Avenue South. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? If not, we'll put that on consent as well. And item number five is Northern Clay Center, 2424 Franklin Avenue East. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number five? If not, we'll put that on consent. So, we have for discussion number two and number three briefly, and for consent, number one, four, and five. No items to be continued or withdrawn. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is our new agenda. We have no report from the committee of the whole or any action items. So, we will move to the public hearing, starting with the items on the consent agenda. I will now open the public hearing for items number one, four, and five. Again, anyone wishing to speak about items one, four, or five? Otherwise, we'll pass the staff recommendation for those. Okay, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Second?
No.
Okay, any discussion on that? None? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those items, one, four, and five are approved. Please talk to staff about any further, your further action on that. With that, we will turn to our items for discussion. First up is item number two, and Kimberly Holene is staff, and will give a report.
The item before you is for a new eight-unit multifamily residential building at 1218 to 22 Como Avenue Southeast. The required applications include a front yard setback variance from 22 feet to 15 feet, which the 22 feet is deestablished, a corner side yard setback variance from 12 feet to seven, and a variance to increase the allowed number of compact stalls from 25 percent to about 37 percent. This project was before you at Committee of the Whole in October. Since that time, the applicant has worked with the neighborhood, and they've also worked to revise the plans to meet some of the recommendations at that Committee of the Whole meeting. So, they've reduced the number of units and the number of bedrooms. They've increased the rear yard setback, and they've made other design modifications that have resulted in a reduction from six required variances to the three that are before you tonight. So, of the yard variances that are required, again, the front yard setback variance is requested from 15 feet, or from 22 feet, excuse me, to 15 feet. 15 feet is the district setback requirement. The 22-foot requirement comes from the established setback of the adjacent residential structure. And then, on the corner side yard, the requirement is 12 feet, and the applicant is proposing a setback of seven feet for this portion of the building here, which is the exercise room that projects into that required yard. Both of these variances would allow for adequate access to light and air for the surrounding properties and adequate separation of uses. For the front yard setback, again, this request is reasonable, given that they are meeting the district setback of 15 feet, but that is increased to 22 feet because of the established structure next door. On the corner side yard, the applicant is balancing a number of requirements, including the requirement to provide active functions along 13th and the required number of parking stalls and the drive aisle width that's required. The active functions provision in Chapter 530 requires 70 percent of this elevation to contain active functions. So, the portion of the building that you're seeing here that projects into the required yard, this exercise room, and then this one-bedroom unit combines make up that 70 percent. The portion of the building that is not required to meet that active functions provision is not within the required yard. This does step back here for the remainder of the parking area. For the variance for the number of compact stalls, three compact stalls would be allowed, and the applicant is proposing four. Staff finds that one additional compact stall is reasonable. The lot size and other site constraints make underground parking impractical on this particular site. So, the applicant is providing the required number of parking stalls and adequate drive aisle width, but again, the four compact stalls is one more than what would be allowed. And again, they're balancing here, trying to keep as much of the building out of the required yard as possible. So, that's the result here is the additional compact stall, which staff finds reasonable, and circumstances unique to the parcel present practical difficulties here. In terms of the site plan review, all the requirements of the Chapter 530 are being met, with the exception of the canopy tree requirement. So, two canopy trees are required. One is proposed. You'll note in the conditions of approval, staff is recommending one additional canopy tree. And then, other conditions of approval relate to the elevations here. So, there's a condition of approval asking that the second entrance facing Como be eliminated to make the primary entrance on this elevation more prominent. And then, a condition of approval related to the louvers on the interior side yard, the west side yard, asking that these be decorative in nature and modified to align with the double-hung windows on the third floor. Staff is recommending approval of all three applications. There is a letter in your packets, in your supplemental packets, from the Southeast Como Improvement Association outlining some of their concerns with the project. A number of those are addressed with the existing conditions of approval proposed by staff, and those that aren't, including sight lighting and a canopy over the side entrance, the applicant is agreeable to. So, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners for staff at this point? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Usually, I hear from the applicant first if they have any comments they would like to make, in particular about the conditions and the proposed conditions from Como. If you can speak to that, that would be helpful.
Hi, my name is Pat Mackey with Mackey-Malin Architects, representing the applicant, CPM Development. We have no issue with the conditions by staff or with the suggestions outlined in your letter from the CICIA group. We find them to be reasonable and an improvement upon the existing state of the design. Those aspects that are a little further out of our control, we're willing to work with the group, staff, city, and whoever requires our work to move that along amicably.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? No questions from Commissioners? Others wishing to speak at the public hearing, please come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Katie Forney, and I live at 912 18th Avenue Southeast, and I'm here because the chair of our Southeast Como Improvement Association zoning committee could not come this evening. I'm a member of the committee. And we are pleased that, to see the changes that have been made in the proposal since early in the fall when it was first presented. We agree with the suggestions that city staff have made. And as was just noted, we are suggesting that the door into the handicapped unit along 13th Avenue, that a canopy over that door of some sort be added to protect the resident or tenant, and any guests there might be from weather.
That's your suggested condition number two?
Right, yes, that's right. And as you just heard, the developer thinks that's probably possible. We note that the landscape plan suggests ash trees. We suggest that maybe some other tree might be better in the light of the problems facing ash trees these days. And we'd like to see more in the plans that retains water on the site around the building. Anything else here? And we note, just for the record, that this building really doesn't provide for, or this design really doesn't provide for, evolution into other uses should the planned use as student housing turn out to not be a long-term way of using this building. Thank you.
Just a question, of the conditions that are in the letter from Joan Mencken, which are the ones that are not included in the staff report?
Let's see, in number three, the retention of water on site.
That should be explored.
I think, yeah, I think that's probably it that...
Okay, and two for sure, I understood that one.
That was, yes, that was not in the recommendations from staff, but...
Okay, thank you. Let's see if there are any questions from Commissioners. I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kimberly, I wonder just if, it would seem that we would need to add just one condition, that condition two about the awning, to sort of include this?
That would be fine.
Yeah, okay.
What's that?
Just wanted to confirm that that would not trigger a need for a variance?
It's on the corner side yard, where they're already requesting a variance from 12 feet to seven. So, there is a condition of approval that asks that the variance, or that the building be constructed as proposed, to comply with that variance request, but I think if the condition adds, if the commission adds a condition of approval asking for that awning, that could be covered under that same variance, as long as it doesn't project more than five feet, which I don't expect it to.
So, awning up to five-foot projection over the handicapped entrance. Okay. And I think we'll just make a suggestion that ash is not maybe appropriate in this day and age?
The ash trees are the existing trees.
Oh, I see.
The proposed are maples.
Okay, good. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item number two? Do you have a response to some of this? Okay.
If I may, and I forgot to mention this when I was last up here, regarding the water retention on site, we are currently working through the PDR process with city staff and frankly, fully expect that to be a condition of their approval. So, we're obviously going to work with other city staff recommendations to eliminate as much storm runoff as possible, to sequester it on site rather than contributing to additional storm sewer activity. So, just to address Katie's point, we plan to work with both neighborhood and staff.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have three applications. Is that right? Four.
Yeah.
Any discussion or a motion? Staff recommend approval, and there was one added condition. Where were we going to put that on the site plan review? On the site plan review, added condition about the awning over the handicapped entrance not to project more than five feet.
And if I may, I'm just reading through this condition number one, under the corner side yard setback variance again. As it reads now, it says, "The building setbacks, as shown on the plan submitted as part of the application, shall be provided..." With that addition of the awning, we should maybe modify that to say, "As shown on the plan submitted..."
Okay.
"...with the addition of an awning," or something along those lines.
So, you think we can include the whole thing and just that modification to condition one, or?
Yeah, I mean, just...
Can you write that down for our record?
You bet. Let's say...
Let's see where we're at.
So, for...
In the meantime, let's see, Commissioner Lipke-Pier, you have a motion?
I was gonna...
Or a question?
I was gonna move the first three variances.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll, with a modified condition?
Well, that's under site plan or...
Oh, site plan, okay.
It's under the second variance, the east corner side yard.
So, I will wait until...
Okay.
Well, I think we can just say, "The building setbacks, as shown on the plan submitted as part of the application, comma, with the addition of an awning, shall be provided." With the addition of an awning over the accessible entrance.
How's that sound?
Sounds great.
Okay, so, your motion is those three variances with that modification to that condition?
That'd be correct.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a discussion? Very silent today. Okay. All in favor of that mo... Oh, no, that's a roll call, please.
Thank you. Bender, Brown, Cohen, Forney, Gagnon, Cronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack. So, that is eight-zero.
Okay, site plan review.
And I will also move site plan review.
Well done. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? If not, please call a roll on the site plan review.
Bender, Brown, Cohen, Forney, Gagnon, Cronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack. Also eight-zero.
Okay, that takes care of that item. Thank you very much. We'll move to item three briefly. Let's hear from Commissioner Cronzer what his concern might be, so staff can address it.
Sure. So, I should say, I usually don't pull things off of consent that appear to be aesthetic in nature, but I think with the front yard setback request and the FAR increase, the roof line of that second-story addition is a merely shed roof, which provides a very tall north wall. I think there's an opportunity there to change that roof shape to a gable, reduce the height of that wall, and make something that just blends better in to the existing structure. So, that's my overall.
Okay. Before we proceed with your report, Commissioner Slack, you had a statement?
Yes, I just need to disclose that I am currently working on the Lowry Avenue Northeast Quarter planning project with Hennepin County.
Okay, but you don't need to recuse yourself. Okay, thank you very much. We'll hear the staff report now.
Sure.
Or the truncated one, yes.
Okay. Thank you, President Tucker, members of the Planning Commission. We have an applicant, or we have three applications before us to allow for an addition to the existing Stanley's Bar and Restaurant located at 2500 University Avenue Northeast. It's at the northwest corner of University Avenue and Lowry Avenue Northeast. The existing restaurant is proposing approximately a 3,500-square-foot addition. It's about 2,400 and change square feet on the first floor, and then there'll be a bar pavilion upstairs on the second floor, and it's essentially replacing an existing outdoor patio. There are two requested variances, and then site plan review. The first variance is to reduce the required front yard setback along University Avenue Northeast from 10 feet to zero. The structure will be setback seven feet, and the portion that will be in the required front yard is approximately in this location and will be two stories in height. Here's the elevation that shows approximately the portion that would be located in that required front yard, and that's again, from 10 feet to zero. The second variance is to increase the maximum gross floor area allowed for a single commercial use from 8,000 square feet to 8,588 square feet. Staff is recommending approval of all three applications with the attached conditions that you'll find in your agenda, and then also the staff report. Additionally, the city planning commission approved the expansion of the parking lot, so they have a parking lot at the rear of their site, plus a principal parking facility, Kitty Corner, across Lowry Avenue Northeast. The property owner has a lease agreement with Hennepin County that allowed for the expansion, and that was approved, and the appeals period has now expired, so the approvals are now As it relates to the proposed roof line, staff reviewed this as well, and we did have some comments internally that perhaps a gable roof would be more aesthetically consistent with the structure. And we ended up not including that as a condition of approval, because we felt as though the shed roofs matched from the existing. Let me show a picture of the existing roof line as well, from University Avenue. So, this is the view presently from University Avenue, and there's that shed roof. This would be the location of the addition. We also felt as though the storm water would be directed towards a roof drain that would be on the outdoor patio, and then it would be taken to the rear of the site via downspout. But staff is interested in hearing any additional conditions that may be placed on the structure, and I can take any questions.
Just one question.
Sure.
Is there any site to the north of the building that's the addition? Is there any site area available?
There, well, there is the seven feet of, yes. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Lipke-Pier?
Hey, Shannon, can you tell us, we're looking at the packet for review, their elevation, they differ between the rendering and the drawn exterior elevation. Can you tell us which one we're actually looking at? Because one has significantly more windows than the other.
I would concur with that as well. So, in discussion with the applicant, as it is approved in the staff report, the only areas where additional windows are being requested by staff as a condition of approval would be in this wall here for the bar addition, so 30 percent of that wall would be required to be windows. And then, in the rear elevation, staff is recommending 30 percent windows in the rear bar, and then transom windows for 30 percent of the building addition.
Okay, so, so back on sheet A 3.1, or one, over A 3.1, the first one you had up there?
Yes.
On the lower, the first-floor portion on the far north side right there?
Yes.
So, those windows are there, unlike this rendering that shows it being something else?
That is accurate. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. If the architect is here and wants to, or the applicant wants to talk about the roof lines, that would be fine. Otherwise, we'll hear from anyone else. Come on up.
My name is Luke Durham. I'm the applicant for the project, and as far as the roof lines, we just thought that would mirror the current structure, and that's why we went with that. And I'm here to answer any other questions you guys have at this point.
Commissioners, any questions? Lipke-Pier?
Yeah, are you averse to changing the roof line?
No, that's just what we thought would mirror the structure the best.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Please come on up and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tyrone Follard. I live at 2327 Second Street Northeast. I'm a neighbor of Stanley's, just two blocks away. My fiancee and I have lived there for about 18 months now, and we absolutely love Stanley's as a neighborhood barn restaurant for ourselves, and we, along with some of our neighbors, are very excited to have a rooftop patio in the vicinity. So, we wholeheartedly support these, and I'd ask that you take staff recommendation and approve the three applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? None? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on item number three here? Come on up and give your name and address if you wish. I don't see anyone else, and in that case, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have three applications. Commissioner Cronzer, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve variance, the front yard variance, variance A with one condition.
Okay, what's that condition?
Condition, on the new addition second-floor roof, change the shed roof to a gable roof or asymmetrical gable roof in order to reduce the height of the north wall of the new addition.
Okay, so, let's change the roof line to symmetrical or asymmetrical gables?
Yeah.
Okay, there, there. Okay? Oh, okay, that's seconded. I'm sorry, that was just the one variance, or, okay. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Lipke-Pier?
I mean, I concur with Commissioner Cronzer. I think that in this particular case, if it were me, I would do an asymmetrical roof that kind of mirrors the other one, just so it's not so harsh for the neighbor to have a two-story flat wall, and maybe add a little bit of, I don't know, interest to it. And then, I don't know if you're keeping an overhang at all, or if the rendering just makes it look like there isn't, but I would, I would think maybe, you know, it looks like a six- or eight-inch overhang on the existing, so consider that. But for sure, the asymmetrical roof would be the way I'd go, but you can decide.
Commissioner Cronzer, do you want to add anything? Okay, so, we have the variance setback front yard with the added condition we were just discussing, and that'll be what, the second condition added, right? So, with two conditions. So, clerk, please call a roll on that with the two conditions.
Bender, Brown, Cohen, Forney, Gagnon, Cronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack, eight-zero.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Cronzer, you want to do B and C?
Yes, motion to approve staff recommendations for variance, B and C site plan review.
Okay, do you want to speak to that at all?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll on B and C.
Bender, Brown, Cohen, Forney, Gagnon, Cronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack, eight-zero.
Okay, that takes care of item number three, there being no other business. Mr. Wittenberg, any announcements?
Committee of the Whole, again, this Thursday for the second week in a row. We are going above and beyond.
We're doing a lot of hard work. Is this more than you expected? Okay, we, with that announcement, we are done with our business, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.